Council meeting, we're very happy that you're here tonight in our audience and very happy those of you who are at home in your nice comfortable warm homes enjoying, hopefully can enjoy the meeting tonight. So maybe we have the roll call please.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Termini?
Here.
Councilmember Betrand?
Here.
Councilmember Vadorov?
Here.
Mayor Harland?
Here. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item tonight, we have a presentation, but I'd first like to announce that we're being broadcast live by community television on channel seventy-one, seventy-two, and seventy-three here in Capitola and twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven in Santa Cruz. And they are rebroadcast various times during the week. So if you want to watch us, you can go onto your computer and find Community Television. And if you want to watch another public meeting, if you're particularly interested in seeing a Board of Supervisors meeting, Santa Cruz City Council, Scotts Valley, Watsonville, Water Board, all sorts of other interesting boards, they're on community television. And so if you have a charter or you want to watch it on the computer, you can. And they have a schedule, so you can print out or look at their schedule to pick out that particular interesting meeting that you want to watch. So anyway, the technician tonight is Lynn Dunton, and we're very happy that we have this access so that people can watch our meetings either live or later on if they've heard about something interesting that happened at the meeting. So we are going to have a Red Cross presentation right now. This is a very interesting one.
I think I have to come out there with you. I'm your representative.
I know.
Wait, I have a uniform, hold on.
Oh, good.
Props.
My disaster vest.
All right.
Got a name tag and everything?
Picture.
Your picture?
No fooling around.
Pretty dang efficient.
Here it is.
Hey, a man in uniform.
This is definitely a photo.
Was on.
Get a picture with him and donate ten dollars.
And two? The Red Cross is one of my favorite organizations in the whole wide world, not just because I'm a nurse. And they rescue people and they take care of people and they give people housing and blankets and food and shelter.
And blood.
And blood. But they are, they are just angels. The people that work there, the people that are volunteers, it's just a wonderful, wonderful organization. And I was, I was pleased to hear a presentation by one of their representatives. And they do so much worldwide. It's absolutely incredible. And people from this area deploy to other countries and other parts of the world, other parts of the United States during disasters. There are people here, a couple of nurse friends that I know and others, laypeople, that put themselves on the ready list and when they are called, they go. And it's absolutely incredible. So the, the Red Cross wanted us to give them a proclamation designating March two thousand and seventeen as American Red Cross Month. And I have to present it to my Termini, which is really special. So whereas American Red Cross Month provides the opportunity each year to recognize and thank our everyday heroes, those who reach out to help people in need. Red Cross heroes help families find shelter after a home fire, give blood to help trauma victims, cancer patients, comfort hospitalized military service members. They use their life-saving skills to save someone from a heart attack, drowning, choking, enabling children around the world to be vaccinated against measles and rubella. Citizens of Capitola are among those volunteering their time and donating their blood. Every eight minutes across the country and around the world, the American Red Cross responds to disasters by providing shelter, food, emotional support, and more. Now therefore, I, Stephanie Harland, Mayor of Capitola, do hereby proclaim March two thousand and seventeen as American Red Cross Month. And I'd also like to encourage all of you again to have your earthquake kit ready, please. Don't put it off, work on it, get it done. It'll be there when you need it and you won't have to panic when we have an earthquake. It's not if, it's when. And they're, they're suggesting now that you have a supply of food at home, water at home, I think, for a week instead of a couple of days. And emergency plan, they have little cards at the Red Cross that you can put in your wallet. And so if you, if, something like that, so that if you're out and about and you become unconscious and someone wants to call your family, there it is, right there in your wallet. So it's really valuable because you never know when something like that's going to happen and you don't want to be caught short. So please give us the rest of the information.
Rest of the story, well, as the Chair of the Santa Cruz Red Cross, I want to thank you for the proclamation, Mayor Harland. And I want to tell you that we have the Pillowcase Project, and the Pillowcase Project is something we teach to kids that they keep certain necessities in a pillowcase in their room in the case of an emergency or a fire, they grab the pillowcase and they run out. Disney World has donated hundreds of thousands of Mickey Mouse pillowcases to us just for that reason. We have our, our Smoke Alarm Program where we go into a mobile home park and we replace or install smoke alarms in every single coach for free. We have done this in hundreds and hundreds of mobile homes around the county, and we can expand this program as well. I might add that I see the young Mr. Gotti is in the audience, and his mother, Anna Marie Gotti, is a far-reaching deployed Red Cross volunteer, as in all over the world. Moments' notice, grab your bag on a plane. It's amazing. These people spend weeks at a disaster. Santa Cruz County has more deployed volunteers than any Red Cross chapter in the country. That is, and we, we hold that very dear. It is simply amazing. Remember our motto? We ask for your time, we ask for your money, and eventually we ask for your blood.
Thank you very much, Mike. And thank everyone at the Red Cross office. We have our next presentation, which is a donation from the Capitola Public Safety Foundation for scholarships. So I'll let them come up and we will do this. It's a wonderful, wonderful occasion. They have done this many times in the past, and we are so grateful. So would the President like to announce the award?
Yes, as the President of Capitola Safety Foundation, with two of our board members here, Mr. and Mrs. Banks, we would like to present the Capitola Junior Guards with a check for two thousand dollars to be used for scholarships for children who might not be able to afford the tuition to junior guards or the feed of junior guards. This covers it for them. And we are always at your service, and you're one of our favorite, among others, charities that we give to in the Capitola Safety Foundation. Would you say a few words about the junior guards?
Thank you very much. This comes in handy for us. We really do appreciate it. We, I'm the program coordinator for the Junior Lifeguard Program with my partner Zoe Zawacki, who couldn't be here tonight, but I'm Anthony Gotti. We, we have kids every summer who come to the beach and they see their friends hanging out, but they might not be able to afford to do the program themselves, or the parents can't afford it, or they're working. And so we're regularly able to offer them the scholarships so they can come to the beach, they can learn water safety, they get to hang out with their friends, they get to be hanging out at the beach, having a great summer. So this really does make a big impact in the lives of tons of children because every summer we have quite a few that do take us up on this offer. So I'd like to thank you again. Really appreciate it.
We're very, we're very excited to start this opportunity of coming before the city council on a regular basis and being able to explain a little bit more about Capitola Foundation, which apparently very few people know about. We began in two thousand and five. This is, we're going on into our twelfth year. We originated the Capitola Rod and Custom Classic Car Show and continue it to this day. And most people think that either the Chamber or the city are the ones who produce it, but it is our major fundraiser. And it is because of that fundraiser and also our golf tournament and generous donations from the citizens of Capitola and its surrounds that we are able to do things like support the Capitola Junior Guards. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, everyone. Are there any additional materials for us tonight? There was an email that we received.
Yes, there was one additional material item for item nine A from the property owner at four oh two Grand Avenue.
This is the time now for public comment, so if anyone has something they'd like to talk to us about, please come up, sign in if you'd like, so that your name is spelled correctly, but you don't have to. If it's, you want to speak on an item that's on the agenda, please wait till we get to it, and then you're welcome to come up and speak, even if it doesn't say it's a public hearing. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Greg Tedesco and I live on Hill Street. A couple of weeks ago, Steve and Concerned Citizens and the Mayor and Jac met with the
Kristen.
The Public Works Department and the consultant hired to do something about Hill Street. Basically, there was three proposals. One was paint and signs for a few thou, well, around thirty grand. Another one was sidewalk on one side, oh, excuse me, and eliminate parking. The other one was sidewalks on one side and eliminate parking. And the third one was sidewalks on both sides and make the street wider to accommodate parking. Anyhow, as I said, they went from, from thousands of dollars to millions of dollars. And Hill Street needs something done right away. Also in this presentation was a timeline. And the timeline was paint and signs can be done anytime. And the next one was the sidewalk, which has a five-year start date. And the third one was a ten-year start date for millions of dollars. Anyhow, I'm just asking the council to give Steve the thirty thousand dollars, I think that was the number, to go ahead and re-stripe Hill Street, remove parking from the south side because that is the side that has the least amount of parking now and the most amount of driveways, so that there can be some relief on Hill Street instead of people driving and having to stop when they, or go slow down when they pass each other, and then you add a pedestrian to the mess and they're scurrying out of the way. But anyhow, I just, since there's been a consultant and there's three plans, I would just like the city council to give Steve the okay to put in paint and signs and remove the parking.
Thank you very much. We can't take any action on that tonight, but I think Steve was going to come back with a tentative plan, so.
Yeah, we're formulating some other alternatives, but yeah, we'll be back probably the next meeting and the meeting after that.
Good, thank you very much. Anyone else like to address us? Good evening. Sorry about that noise. Good evening. My name is Patrice Keat, and I am the founder and executive director of the Santa Cruz Children's Museum of Discovery in the Capitola Mall in the former Abercrombie and Fitch Base. In case you haven't been there, please come visit us. I wanted to tell you a little bit about the museum and ask for your financial support for the museum. The museum has many of the same goals that you do as a city council. We want to enhance revenue for the city, and we do that. We have an average of four thousand visitors per month in our museum. We've been open for about two and a quarter years and we've had over a hundred thousand visitors. We have thirteen hundred members, who, many of whom come very frequently. We have gotten grants to fund family access memberships for families that cannot afford to come to the museum. So we have a wonderful blend of socioeconomic diversity in our museum. We have eight thousand square feet of hands-on discovery activities for children. We run two programs every day, science and art programs. We're open every day, mall hours basically, and only closed a few days of the year. We have a wonderful staff, and we also have a mobile museum that we take out to underserved parts of the county and two events. We've been asked to come to some of your events, and we're going to be doing that this summer and spring. And we have been at the Art and Wine Festival before. We're a wonderful resource for parents to bring their children, socialize with each other, and also participate in programs that we have for parents, parent education programs. We run a citizen science program, and we're about to open a tinkering studio for older children in our museum. And that will be a really wonderful place for them to learn hands-on skills using tools, using found objects to create and tinker. So thank you very much for your attention about the museum. Please feel free to contact me about any questions that you have, and I'll be leaving a letter for all of you. Thank you very much. Quickly.
I just have a question.
One question, quick, quick question for you.
One question. Can you tell something to the listening audience and those here about membership and how someone might join and what that would mean?
Yes. It, on a, you can come in on a one-time basis, and that's eight dollars for adults and five dollars for children. Under one year of age is free. And then memberships start at fifty dollars for families that have children under two and eighty-five dollars, which means you can come in all day, all year. And that is for a family of four. And then a hundred and twenty-five dollar, a hundred and thirty-five dollars, sorry, for more extended members of your family. I joke that you can bring your whole neighborhood for that much. And we give out, part of it is free passes. We have a shop, so we're bringing in tax revenue to the city, to the mall. So we have a gift store, and members get a discount at that. We have birthday parties and we do school field trips on a sliding scale. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to address us? Yes. Good evening.
Hello. I'm Barbara Fabro and a resident of Depot Hill, and I wasn't able to attend the last meeting where there was some dis-
We're going to be having that on the agenda coming up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's okay. Yeah, we got your letter. So sorry, that's the next, next item, pretty soon. Any other, any other comments from the public on any general items, not on the agenda? Then this is a time for city council comments. And do you have any?
I just have one thing. I just, we had mentioned this in the past, and there seems to be a situation in the village that's escalating. So I wondered if we could put on the agenda to have a discussion about code and ordinance enforcement as it relates to signs and other items in the village. Sure. So if we could add that to a future agenda, I appreciate that. Sports that.
Anything else?
And just, I just have one quick question for Steve about the poll and PG&E poll on Rosedale.
So I called, I'm, first I just noticed, notified of it was today, so I called PG&E, called their emergency number. They were sending out a crew to take a look at it. That's all the information. I went out there, I mean, the poll's not about to fall down, I don't think, but PG&E's been notified and said they would take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Hinni?
Yeah. Last week I went on a tour of the pump station at Nob Hill, and as some of you may be aware, I've been talking to merchants in the area to talk to them about the smell that emanates from the pump station. And I've also talked to quite a few of the residents that live up the hill from there. And it is of concern. And so my issue right now is to try to get the sanitation district to deal with it in a way that is long-term. They are planning a new upgrade, and so I plan to meet with the civil engineer that is putting together those plans. I've been informed that they are going to increase the filtering. Right now, they have two filter canisters, which are rather large, I might say, and they're going to double that. And my point to them, though, is to fix the smell before it's actually created, because sometimes the filtering system fails, the existing one fails right now, as we all know. So a lot of the merchants express concern because it depresses business, and we all know that that whole area has been waiting for development. This must be an issue that might be affecting them. The other thing is, as Ed and I were on the, the General Plan Committee, and one of the things I've been talking about as a result of that is the need to look at the mall in a unified way. And so I understand that city planning, next week is going to be starting that process. So what I look forward to is a plan that looks at that as a district so that we could have unified approach to that, zoning issues that might help developers move their projects forward in a way that is consistent with how we, how we view our city. Thank you.
Okay, Mike?
Jac and I yesterday attended our first meeting for the homeless, the task force. Right. That's it. Unified Task Force on Governance for Homelessness in the County. It was very informative, very interesting, and they'll keep going, and I'm sure both of us will be reporting back. Jac is the Capitola representative. I happen to have secured a seat as a representative of the Santa Cruz County Business Council, so we get to double dip on that committee, and I think that's good. Go ahead, Jac, you want?
I did reach out to our new police chief about that, and I think there's a chance that, you know, we could sit down with some of the staff in the police department and get a better picture of what goes on in this city. It is an issue, and some people say it's an increasing issue. This is a governance committee. I understand it's not the, the way to actually deal with the issues per se firsthand, but it will help in the, you know, fixing or preserving.
We had a Second Harvest Community Hunger Fighters Award last night, and I represented the city there, and it was wonderful and some amazing things being done, with several million meals being raised over the holiday season. We had our library meeting on Thursday as well, or on Wednesday, Library Design Ad-Hoc Committee meeting, and the library design's come along nicely. We had a meeting last night, and it was attended by some community members and some council members, and I'm sure they'll agree that the renderings we saw are no less than breathtaking. We're going to, it's a wonderful project, and the budget seems to be coming in right where we thought it would come in. We had it estimated by two independent estimators, so, you know, keep your fingers crossed. Without, you know, too much escalation, I think we might get by with this. I'll be meeting next week with a few junior guards' parents and the city manager, and we're going to try and figure out how we can keep the junior guards competing on a statewide basis. It's more challenging than we thought, and we really need the parents as well as the Santa Cruz Fire Department to lock arms with us and really put some pressure on the, the Lifeguard Association, so they'll give us some latitude for our very special beach. And that is all. Thank you. I'd like to be a part of that. I did get a letter on that. I'd like to be a part of that. I got a letter on that, and I just haven't responded, so if I could get the time and stuff.
Kristen, do you have any?
Yeah. So the Capitola Historical Museum is having the grand opening of their next exhibit this Saturday from noon to two. It's going to be called The Nature of Capitola, and it's all about nature, wouldn't you believe it? And it's a fantastic exhibit, and the, the week before the soft opening, we did a cleanup day with, with a bunch of the board members and the volunteers, and I've never had so much fun cleaning glass and getting rid of cobwebs because it's just a great community of people that are involved in the museum. So I highly recommend that if you have a chance to go check out the grand opening this Saturday, that you do so. And then from there on out for the rest of the year, the museum will be open Thursday through Sunday from noon to four. And then also, I'll have more information on it at our, our next meeting, but just as a kind of save the date, I guess, I'll mention that AMBAG, the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, is going to be having community meetings to discuss the future of the region. What's the region going to look like in 2040 in regards to transportation, sustainable communities? I believe the closest meeting to us is going to be in Watsonville, but I will have the, I didn't bring the paper with me tonight, but I will have the exact location and more information about that at our next meeting. And then finally, I'm, I have been given the opportunity tomorrow to speak with a couple of classes at New Brighton Middle School and to talk with the youth about how they would want to be involved in, in city, the city government and just involved in their community. And so hopefully at the next meeting, I'll have some information to share on, on how the youth are interested in being involved.
Great, great.
Can you mention that we're listening, we're looking for a youth member on the Council on the Environment?
I'm going to mention that, yeah, that we're looking for a youth member for the Commission on the Environment, and I have also been given the thumbs up to ask any youth if they want to join the Friends of the Capitola Library. And I would also bring it up to them that if they're interested in being a volunteer at the museum, that they can, you know, join one of the adult volunteers and, and just get involved in any way that they would be interested in being involved.
Yeah, that's great. That's great. I have a couple. I saw an email that the Soquel School District is having on March twenty-seventh, it's a Monday night from six to eight-thirty, a meeting that they're calling an Information Night on Immigration. I don't have any other information about that. I tried looking it up on their website and there wasn't anything there. But various school districts, as you all know, are handing out information to the children and their parents and having some information, informational meetings and opportunities for people to get together and get their questions answered and so forth. I went to the Soquel Creek Water District meeting, and that was very interesting. And they're continuing their work to try to find supplemental water source. I would encourage everybody to also watch the Panetta Lectures. There's a series of four of them. They used to be on community television, they're not, they're not showing them now, but they're, you can stream them on the computer. They are absolutely excellent, inspirational, and not to be missed. So check their schedule. We are doing a little work on Zone Five. We had a Zone Five meeting this week, and I worked with Soquel Creek Water Board member Carla Christensen to bring up some issues about Zone Five, about Capitola in there, and said that I am asking for a maintenance plan for the drains in Capitola and for them to clean out the culverts above ground in Capitola and for them to develop an engineering, to do the engineering to solve the problem of the drain that comes out at Soquel Creek right then to McDonald Lane. I said, that is going to fail again. Let's do the engineering, let's see what's going to, what's going to be a fix. Let's get this, a plan for, for what we're doing with our drains here in Capitola, is that if we have another one that fails or is not working, we know what's theirs, what's ours, or whatever the plan is, we just need to know that. So we're going to be working on that. The, I went to a Village Merchants meeting this morning. They have a group of, of the smaller, smaller businesses that get together on Thursday mornings and to try to promote business in the village off-season. And so they're working on some advertising things and various programs and plans to try to get locals down there and some more, some more action and energy in, in the village to support the businesses there. We, that's, I think that's it for now. So we will go on to our next item, which is, treasurer's comments, please.
Okay, quickly. As an exercise, I've been on Business Analytics, which is a great software and, that we have for financial analytics, obviously. And I was looking at city payroll salaries as an exercise, and then went on Salary.com, which is a great website if you get a handle on people's salaries and what, what you should be looking for. Anyway, just as kind of a sanity check to see how we stand. And I only did a few spot checks, but I found that we're well within the reasonable limits of, of salaries of our city employees, so there's nothing that jumps out as too low or too high in, in my spot check anyway. So I found that encouraging, with of course the exception of the city treasurer, who's grossly overpaid.
Are there staff comments?
So I'd like to mention that the, last night, the Traffic and Parking Commission had a meeting with the residents of Topaz Avenue, who came last council meeting, or the meeting before, actually, to talk about concerns they have with the volume of traffic on their road. We actually have conducted, taken some measurements of the traffic, and they are about five times the volume on their street than the neighboring streets have. So we had a good workshop with them, talked about some ideas. I emphasize that we can't make changes on their street that just shift the traffic onto another street. We need to kind of look at some global solutions. So we had a good workshop, talked about some ideas, and hopefully within the next month we'll be coming forward with some ideas for your council to consider.
Great, great. Are there any other staff comments, anyone? Then we'll go on to the Consent Calendar, and these are items, oh, Jamie?
No, I was just going to say we have no further comments. That's all.
Consent Calendar, items that are minor, and they are usually dealt with in one motion, but if anyone would like to pull anything for separate discussion, council or the audience, we can do that. But I wanted to have Lynn come up and, and speak on her item also. Lynn Robinson is here tonight, and we're very happy to have you here. Welcome.
And it's an honor and a pleasure to be here. And I'm here with Gail Jean Sass-McQuire, the awesome mother- And I'm here with Gail Jean Sass McGuire, the awesome mother of Daniel McGuire, and Capitola City Council, along with all the other cities and the county, two years ago, supported a bill that Senator Monning's office had put forward. They've worked so wonderfully and so close with Gail Jean and her family to really create the safety in driver training that's needed for the commercial trucks and big rigs. And tragically, the accident that took Daniel's life, who was a dear friend of my own son's, was so preventable, horrifically, the driver that day. It was horrific for him. He had no business being on the road and without the proper training, which he didn't have, especially for Highway 17. Daniel's dear sister, to this day, lives within a half a mile of here, and she is one of those commuters. In our county, as we all know, how many people we know that are commuting over Highway 17 or even on Highway 1. So we are really here to just say thank you to you. We're so grateful that you understand the synergy and why this is important to us in the county here, and because you were so supportive of it last time, the Office of Bill Monning with his staff has worked really closely with the DMV and then with other, with the trucking, basically the Association of Truckers themselves, to really now craft this bill that's moderate. It's just putting in some basic, basic training standards that don't exist right now, that could really have the legacy of not having the kind of horrific tragedy that the McGuire family has experienced, so that no one else has to go through an experience that's truly preventable. We're really here to just give gratitude. We don't need the item pulled, but we wanted to say thank you for your support.
Thank you very much for working on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any, would anyone like to pull any item from the consent calendar, from the council or in the audience? Then would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved. Oh, sorry, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any answers? Thank you very, thank you both very much for being here tonight. Thank you very. Thank you all very much for being here tonight. We really appreciate it. And Lynn is a former council member and mayor of the city of Santa Cruz, who's probably only been here maybe once before in your life, or you've been here a couple of times? Yeah! Thank you, we're so happy to have you.
She would come here to relax, once using officer.
I already like seeing this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very, very much for being here. The next item are the general government items. We have Item A, Consider Concepts to Relocate the Grand Avenue Pathway.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just to give us a quick recap on, make sure everybody knows where the Grand Avenue Pathway is, I have it aerial, broken into sections here. So starting on the westerly edge by the cliff apartments, we have a green section that's actually open to vehicle traffic, and there's bollards at this end, and we have a section that goes from central to Oakland that approximately averages about eight to 10 feet wide of paved pathway and has, at this point, good protection from the slope. And we have the section from Oakland to Hollister, which is where we're gonna focus our discussion on tonight. And then finally, I included this in it, because the path used to go all the way up to Sacramento, it no longer does, and so we've lost this section many, many years ago, but originally, did it continue that far? So looking from, this is Oakland here and Hollister up here, we have a pathway with a little bend in it. Obviously, the hillside in this area, the bluff has eroded, and it juts out here, and as the pathway does. This is the area where we had a recent failure. Here's a picture taken January 23rd of this year. You can see the failure. Here's the pathway above it. I estimate we've lost approximately eight feet of cliff face up on this side, up in this area here, adjacent to the pathway. It obviously varies, but at this point, the fencing along the pathway that kind of protects people is being undermined. Looking at a survey of the property in the area, we have in Oakland over here and Hollister over here, the property line, or the right-of-way line exists now, is this blue line here. The green dash is the pathway, you can see where it juts out. So there's an area here, happens to be right adjacent to where the slope failure was, that's within the road right-of-way, that has been utilized, and, you know, with our knowledge and approval, utilized by the property owners here for landscaping and other improvements. That's the area that we can now, we believe, relocate the pathway and get it reopened. The pathway is now closed. So just a picture standing, this is in front of 404 Grand Avenue. We believe the property line runs along this fence line and into the property at 402 Grand Avenue. You see, here's the little bend that we've seen in all the other pictures. So in 2005, the city council went through a process to try and establish the minimum width that we would maintain for the pathway. And when I say the pathway, I think it includes everything from the fence to the edge of the pathway. It's not necessarily where it's always been paved. So that was an eight-foot pathway, and we utilized the full width of the Grand Avenue right-of-way in order to maintain that width. The direction also included, as the right-of-way diminishes and there's no longer a safe pathway and we can't keep it open without going out of private property, that we would close the pathway at that time. This isn't a, put any ordinances or anything else, this was council direction at that time. This council certainly has the right to reconsider those directions, but this is the direction we've been working on since 2005. So tonight, we're before you with a project to relocate the pathway in front of 402 and 404 Grand Avenue. This project will, like I said, remove the improvements, and it will take care of the drainage on the pathway as we relocate it to make sure that the drainage doesn't go out over the cliff face and exacerbate the erosion that's already going on. So we will do some drainage improvements. At this time, we don't have the, there's nothing in the project to do any stabilization of the bluff face or the toe of the slope. So that means erosion will continue along the bluff face. Talking with the city manager today, we went out and took a look at it, because we heard it eroded more, and it is continuing to erode as it dries out until we get more rain, that we may want to consult with a local geologist on the ability to construct the project and the safety of the relocated pathway. It's an option, we didn't include it in the original scope of work in the agenda packet, but it's something, get your direction on later. So looking at the two properties where we're relocating the pathway, they both have landscape improvements in that area. 402 Grand Avenue, which is a letter that we received and was given to you today, they were granted a revocable encroachment permit in 2014 for their landscape improvements, and that agreement includes a 45-day notice in which they would be required to remove the improvements if the city wanted to use it for public purposes. At 404 Grand Avenue, a similar permit does not exist, but the city retains in perpetuity the right to use the right-of-way that's there for public purposes. So it's just a matter of noticing and working with the property owner at that location to get things relocated. So our recommendations tonight is to initiate a capital improvement project, to relocate the pathway in front of 402 and 404 Grand Avenue to the northern edge of the right-of-way, give Public Works the authorization to notify the property owners of the project, and issue notifications when necessary to relocate, to remove the private improvements. The 45-day notice, we're more than 45 days away before we're gonna be putting a pathway in that site. We need to get coastal development permits, we need to do the survey work, we need to put plans and specifications together. So what this is, it's just so we can tell the property owners there, we've gotten council direction to move the pathway. At some point, we're gonna be coming to you and asking you to remove the improvements that are there, or we'll do them and bill you for them, and at one point, we'll have to give them their formal 45-day notice. At this point, we would survey and mark the right-of-way line between Oakland and Hollister so we all know where it is, property owners and ourselves, and we will work with a consultant engineer to develop preliminary layouts and estimates for the project, and then I'd also ask for your provided direction, do we want to have to involve a geologist in the project at this time? And that's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, Michael.
Steve, would you necessarily need the council to give you direction to go forward to maintain the path, or can we tell you of our desire to keep the path open until you come back to us with some kind of geologist report, or, you know, I'd like to know how stable that is now, before we go through the expense of keeping it, if we believe that thing's gonna fall in the next nine months and lose what we developed and what we've caused the neighbors to remove? Is that, would that be a rational path?
I think that's what the city manager and I came up with when we were out there this afternoon, is what is feasible. I think it, you know, I think if we move the path, there's a good, oh, eight to 10 feet that we can move it back, and that's pretty stable, you know, over the years, is it gonna be there for 10 years? I can't answer that. You know, I don't think a geologist is gonna give, tell you how long it's, you're gonna have. I think we could move it back now, move the fence in, and feel comfortable to open it. Right now, we can't open it.
Would a decision, would, you know, an expression of intention and consensus by the council be enough just to get us far enough so we learn more about?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, Madam Mayor, excuse me, the, I think, I think what we would recommend is getting the authorization to go ahead and mark the corners, meet with the geologist, and assuming things look okay, move the project forward, and then we would come to the council with the authority, and you'd have the opportunity to weigh in. But if we ended up talking to the geologist and they said, "You got six months of this, best-case scenario, stop work, we come back to the council."
Either way, you know, just, it would come back to us with a report from the geologist and the condition of what the cliffside looks like right now. Okay, thank you.
Are there questions before I open it up to the audience?
Yeah, I've got two questions. If you can go back to the drawing, it shows the overhead, I'm trying to get a picture of, yeah, there we go, thank you. I've heard different rumors, for lack of anything, about how much space there was. I've heard five feet, and today you just mentioned 10, so we really don't know what that distance is that we actually have, that we can acquire, and that won't be known until we actually do a survey. That be accurate?
So I think this picture, you know, for estimating purposes, if this is the property line, and I'm, you know, reasonably comfortable that that's the property line. So, yeah, what's this distance here? That's, you know, in this distance, it's probably five to 10 feet. I don't, you know, but no, we will not know for sure until we get it surveyed.
Okay, I'll save my other comments till after.
I'd like to give the, members of the audience a chance to come up and give us your thoughts or your comments, and also, if you wanna, you might, you might have some questions, so I'm gonna let you ask any questions of Steve also to get your questions answered. Yes, please come up.
Hi.
Good evening.
I'm 402 Grand Avenue. My name is Jim Castellanos, and I want to thank everybody for their cooperation and your responsiveness to this. It's a, I think it's a really critical issue for the community and for the property owners, actually, on Grand Avenue all the way down to Hollister. I think, I have a letter from my neighbor, he's been out of town, and I really regret that we didn't have the time to spend together, but we spent a lot of time on the phone discussing different options and so on, and the feeling we've had is that, you know, we're hoping that this isn't a Band-Aid that fixes the issue for 12 to 18 months, you don't know. I mean, it's, I've been there now for, I think, approaching seven years. I've been a Capitola resident now for 17 years, and I've spent my entire 17 years on a path. I was previously in the Windmill House, and so I know, I know something about pathways and the benefit to the community of pathways. I always told, you know, my neighbors and friends back over the hill that being on a path in Capitola, I met more people in six months than I did 20 years in Saratoga, and that's a fact. But, so I know the benefits, I have friends in Santa Cruz that ride their bike to Capitola, and they love that pathway, and it's, it's an incredible benefit. So my personal hope is that whatever solution or whatever the council and the city decides is that it'll be something that's, has a long-term benefit. I think that's a very valuable pathway. I think there's a tremendous impact, not so much on myself, even my neighbor at 404, but when you take the other two properties at the end of the street, you know, if they wanted to, if they wanted to come over, if they wanted to go to town and all, now they gotta walk all the way around. And it's just a beautiful walk along the fence and along the ocean that would be, I think, really hard to give up. Can I get these, here's a letter from?
Yeah, just give them, give them to us.
My neighbor, John Hart, wrote a letter, and I'll read it for the benefit of everybody here. He wanted me to present this, as he is out of town and not returning till next week. I would like to have the time to spend with him, and I know that I talked to a lot of you with the hopes that we would have some time to make a solid decision, and John is an incredibly resourceful guy, and I, if there's a silver lining for both of us, we've spent a lot of time talking, and I think we've really gotten to know each other, and I think we'd like to put our heads together and come up with a good, hopefully, a really good long-term solution on that pathway, because I do believe it is valuable, and so, these are his comments. It'd be a little different from mine, but in my April 20th, 2016 Vision Capitola Workshop presentation, I said that I wanted Capitola to preserve the four-block walkway along the bluff on Depot Hill. I pointed out that in some areas, the walkway already comes within two to three feet of the top edge of the bluff, and if nothing's done, parts of this continuous path will be lost forever, and much of the social hub of the Depot Hill will be lost as well. I felt that it was appropriate for Capitola to address the bluff failure issues as part of its vision, since the Capitola Municipal Code 4.42 states that, I won't go into it, but there's a responsibility, they say in this that they're gonna maintain the Depot Hill bluff. Recently, as I predicted in April, one block of the four-block walkway between, became unsafe due to the erosion in front of 402 and 404 Grand Avenue and is temporarily closed. Further, I believe that if an engineering study of the entire Oakland to Sacramento part of the walkway had been done two years ago, it would have concluded that an area further along the walkway was already too close to the cliff edge and unsafe. The reason this erosion has not been noticed is that no engineering study has been done, and the erosion is well-hidden by plants. In conclusion, I believe the first step is now to do the long-overdue engineering study of the entire Oakland to Sacramento section of the public walkway to determine if moving it a few feet will safely solve the problem, and if it does, how much of the walkway needs to be moved and how long it will remain safe. Also, this study should identify other long-term solutions that we may want to consider. And that was my hope coming in here tonight, would be that I would have the opportunity to work and that we would try to utilize our properties and work with something that would give a more stable walkway and something that was preferably a more long-term solution. So I thank you very much for it.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak on this?
Skip Allen from McCormick Avenue, please excuse my stutter. Many of us were at the informational meeting two weeks ago, which discussed the current closure of Grand Avenue. Members of the public also spoke, and at a show of hands, it was unanimous that we try to keep the pathway open. If the pathway is relocated inland, no private property will be affected. Unfortunately, the estimate is about six months to relocate the pathway. My take is the Grand Avenue pathway is an outstanding public resource. It's historical, it is well-used by the public and visitors. It's an outstanding window on the bay. I've walked this pathway for 42 years now. I encourage the city council to save the Grand Avenue pathway. I encourage the city council to save the Grand Avenue pathway by relocating it inland if it is safe to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Would anyone else like to speak? Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for waiting.
Yeah. Proper time. So, I live in Depot Hill. My name is Barbara Fabro, and much of what I was going to say has already been presented here with the love of the uniqueness that the bluff offers to not just the people that live in that area, but to everyone that comes and visits. I think on any given day, you can see any number of people either whale-watching or walking their dogs, or kids learning how to ride their bike, or people enjoying a sunset view, or whatever might be going on out there. And I guess it's the Italian in me that thinks of it as a piazza, or maybe for lack of a better term, a city park that everyone can enjoy. So I think that the uniqueness that it offers and the enjoyment that it offers to everyone is something we all value and would certainly love to find a way to preserve. But then when you come down to the pragmatic question of how does something like that get funded, it makes me think of Measure F, where it was the recognition of the desire to save something as unique as the wharf came into play, and finding a way to make sure that could happen. And when you read in the Measure F, it states that the revenue will be used to maintain and protect our wharf and beaches from storms and rising sea levels, and to take care of and improve our parks. So if you wanted to use your imagination and think of that walkway as a city park, because that's truly how it functions, I wondered if there isn't some way to include this project under that umbrella. So, yeah, I had written a, a letter, just in case. I wasn't going to be able to be here to speak, but there is extras of those for you to look at those sentiments in a little more detail. So, anyway.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Then I'll bring it back to the council and Michael will start.
Sure. You know, this is also, first of all, I'm in favor of saving the path, and I think we need to see the, you know, the geologist's report and the survey so we can make a, you know, rational decision. But in addition to that, I think we need to wake the Jihad up, the Geological Hazardous Basement District, because this, the last time, it was before us, and it was many, many years ago, while we didn't approve the cladding of the base of the cliff, we did highly recommend, which is something that we were permitted to do, is the cladding of the upper portion, which is the dirt portion that keeps sloughing off, and whether it's horizontal boring or in conjunction with gunite, you know, there's a way to protect that, because right now, the Zone 5's not helping us, because there's runoff that runs right over the cliff, and that needs to be diverted. So there's a lot of things that can be done to maintain that path, not just for a few years, but for many years. And I think we need to do a little research in that, too. I know that the, the Jihad doesn't have any money, but it doesn't mean we can't revive it in some way, and I think that's appropriate. And I believe that setting staff about to do the proper research in hopes of saving the Grand Avenue path is my motion.
Let's wait, not have a motion yet. Let's have some more discussion. Yeah. Who would else like to talk?
I'll go ahead, I'll jump in. Can I go to the slides? There's like five bullet points on a slide.
I wonder in the next one.
I think it's the second one. There we go. So just, I know you don't want a motion, but if I was going to consider a motion, I would be more inclined to look at something that included the last three bullet points as opposed to the first two.
That was part of my motion.
Okay, I, I, we're not there yet, but I'm just, I'm not ready for items one and two. What I really want to know is, especially after what happened, is, is I'm, I'm really interested in the survey. I mean, I know it's nice that we believe where the line is, and it almost looks by the line that that is where it is, and probably will be within 12 inches of that. My concern over when the first drop happened, we lost a substantial portion, and then just since that, as was noticed when you walk up there today, it's gone from a six-foot exposure to the fence to about 50 feet. So, you know, there's, there's the, there's the, none of this is an emergency. I, I think that the only important thing that we've done is closed the path, okay? This is a long-term problem. It's like, what, how are we going to address that entire bluff? And that is, you don't have to change charts, but it's also the green and the yellow and the blue, all the colors that you addressed, okay? Because our whole bluff is in play right here, and it's, it's what the ocean is doing and what, what we're not doing to prevent that. So we, we're going to focus right now on this path, but, but my big concern is, is I stand on the, I believe it's about six or seven feet of asphalt that remains there right now. I don't feel safe standing on that asphalt. And to, to think that we would move it back another six feet and give me some false pretense that because I have six feet where, on the other side of a fence, I feel safe, and what bothers me is when, when somebody goes in there to excavate and remove all that work, and when we go in there to compact and put asphalt down, what we're going to be doing to that soil, and, and I'm not, I'm, I'm on the city council barely, I'm not a geologist, okay? So I, I don't want to weigh in on one, what the stability of that bluff is. I know when I walk underneath it and look up, it's pretty eerie, okay? It doesn't look like there's, there's, there's a lot of water, there's a lot of seepage, there's a lot of crevices. It just looks like any section could break off. So, you know, my, my concern, I think it was mentioned by, by one of the homeowners, Jim mentioned it, is that, you know, if, if, if we go ahead and go to this big ordeal to move it back, and then we have another sliver of the cliff drops off, what have we accomplished? Because if you go down to the other two homes there, if we were to lose another piece out of them, the next section that would fall could possibly take some of that fence that we think is a barrier, which really means nothing, okay? And it could consume the asphalt. So this is one of those things where I don't know, and, and I, I think that maybe it's going to be our obligation to look into at least the last bullet point, the one above it, and, you know, for one thing, definitely find out where that line is and where we're going to take.
That was the intention of my motion, that, that was my understanding, too. I was wondering, Mr. City Manager, if you could give a little background on this district that Michael brought up, and some history so that I could understand and the city council can understand what the purpose of that was and how far it went. And it seemed like it went sort of, but it didn't-
Wasn't here when we did-
That would be something that we need to get documentation to the council members. Oh, so maybe at a later date? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I wouldn't be comfortable. I, I think Steve may have more background on the Jihad, but I think it may even predate his experience with the city, so I think it'd be, we'd be better served by actually, you know, preparing a memo and getting-
No, no, I, I thought you might be familiar, so my mistake on that. But I'm very interested, and it sounds like it was set up to deal with this particular situation that Ed is alluding to, that we need to have something a little more permanent. I, too, look forward to the engineering study. They'll tell us a little bit about the conditions and what we can do, and that's the kind of thing I'm looking for.
Geologist study.
Excuse me, geologist, right. So I brought up the fact that there is a lot of water running off there, and it was, it seems to me it was the water that laden the sand and made it heavier, and then it's left off. Is, is that a possibility that we could do things to divert or contain? Is that something we could do?
So, we, we've done some drainage improvements out there. Actually, the Jihad in the past had developed some drainage improvements that they recommended that the, there's three drains that drain out onto the cliff now that come off public property, that they'd be extended down into the base rock area so they're not affecting the upper soils. And we, we completed those. I'm going to say it was five, six years ago that we put those in. We have done our efforts to maintain it, so as much of the road, rain that's hitting the pathway is going out, going back toward these drains and going out through these drains and not going over the cliff face. Obviously, there's some areas where there isn't pathway, where there is soil. Most of the water you see coming out is not surface water going over the top. It's groundwater that gets in there and is migrating in that direction. So, and that's a little, very hard to intercept and deal with. So we've done some improvements up there. We've never looked at a, a detailed armament of the bluff, either the upper terraces or the toe. As a city, it's never been a city project to look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Senior, do you have comments?
As recommended actions, I would be in favor of all five of these happening, but I, I do agree that, that going forward with the bottom three bullet points first would be beneficial, and then coming back with the results of, of that survey, the work with the geologist and the engineer, and then with that information, potentially moving forward with the top two bullet points.
Good, I agree. I don't have anything else to add. Your comments were really, I really agree with your comments, Ed. You have kind of sort of outlined it, the situation. It's not a pretty picture, there's not any easy solutions. We're just going to have to go into this and see what's there and what we can do. We can't promise anything, and we don't know what we're going to do. We're going to look at it and, I think, do our best to try to keep that path open, because I think everybody here loves it as much as everybody in the community does.
Just a quick follow-up, I appreciate that, Stephanie. I think what's really important is that, is that when this slide happened, or the break-in, the first break-in approximately three weeks ago, and just the rain over the last weekend that caused the other additional damage, it really makes it a fragile situation. So I, I know that the homeowner's asking for some time, he's looking for 90 days. I know that whatever we're going to do is probably going to take somewhere in the realm of 30 or 60 days. Is that, is that a good guess, or is it going to be a night? I mean, are we both on the same page is what I'm asking?
Yeah, I, I think his, I'm not exactly sure what 90 days he was asking for was the 45-day notice become a 90-day notice, and certainly we, we'll have plenty of time to do that. I think, survey, last time I talked to the surveyor, he was about three weeks out before getting the line marked. In the meantime, I can be working with the engineer, just doing some preliminary layouts and trying to get a geologist out there. So it's going to be at least three, four, four weeks before we have reports and then schedule it for a council hearing.
And just one more question. I'd asked you to look into the, that telephone pole at the end of Hollister, did we ever get hold of PG&E about-
Did notify them, I haven't heard back yet.
Okay, as long, as long as we've notified them, that's, that's all I can turn about. So I'm, I'm fine if Mike has a motion.
Chuck has a comment?
Could I ask a question? We spend a lot of money on consultants, and I was just wondering, with the surveyor and the geologist and the extra study, do you have an idea how much that's going to add to this project?
So I think the serv, to actually mark the survey lines is going to be $1,500 to $2,000. Doing the preliminary layout, since we're not going to full design at this point, is probably going to be, I'm going to say, $500 to $7,500. The geologist, I haven't done a lot of work with geologists, I, that's probably going to be another, easily, I could see that being $5,000 to $10,000 on that, too.
And compare that to just laying some pavement?
Well-
If you just did items one and two and didn't do three, four.
So we need to do number three, or bullet number three and four. We, we need, because this project, we'll need to go out to bid, we'll have to have plans and specification and the design of what we're doing. So I need to put all that together. I just can't go out there with a contractor. It's not an emergency work. So we're going to have to do the plan work anyway. I don't think the only, the only added cost I see that we've added tonight is the geologist's costs.
Thank you.
You're, you're experiencing what, what it's like for governments to do little projects, and they, they add up, they add up. We, I think, I think our staff though does an excellent job of trying to really rein in the bureaucracy and to keep it as, running as smoothly and, and quickly as, as possible. But that's all very frustrating to all of us, too.
I think there are, there are neighbors up there that are ready to consult a geologist themselves, and I don't think that's our biggest issue right now. I think that we need to get out there and, like Ed said, do, let's do the survey, let's consult with an engineer and see, first of all, if we can even build a path. And I think that the, the essence of my motion is, don't go forward and just start making a path.
Right.
But bring us back the, the right-of-way with the survey and engineering report, and perhaps a preliminary geologist's report that's, that's being obtained by one of the neighbors as well. All the information we can get on the path, the better.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Comments, Jack?
So, to get information on the Jihad, Jihad.
That's going to be sent to the council members in, in email format.
Okay, great. And as part of the motion, can we have a little additional funding beyond the $12,000, I think, from the staff report for the geologist?
As determined. I'd like to, before we approve that, let's see what the, I believe that some of the neighbors are consulting a geologist as well, and-
We might want to share the cost.
We may share the cost with them, but, yes.
Well, I think we can keep it within the city manager's-
Yes.
The $25,000, are we going to have to keep under your?
Yes, I think that we can be talking about, you know, if the geologist needs $10,000, we got to talk, but if it's a relatively minimal cost to sort of consult with somebody who's already familiar with the situation. The one, the one point I want to make about bullet number two is, is I understand the notion that it's a bit of the cart before the horse. But the, the reason why staff put that in front of the council was because none of the rest of it makes sense unless we're prepared to take that step. So I think what would be helpful is, even if the motion stands as it does, just hearing that, assuming the geologist says things are good and no other problems arise, that the council is prepared to give notice to the property owners that they're going to need to move their stuff off the public, public right-of-way.
I am, but not at this time.
And that's, that, that's, that's all we were really looking for. We understand that we still have 120 days, maybe even more, before we would actually start the work, and we will be coming back to the council. But we wanted to really hear the council say, yes, that's the right direction to go, relocating it onto private property. We won't issue them a formal notice at this stage, but as long as the council is aware that that's the obvious logical step and everyone's prepared to do so, assuming the pieces fall into place.
I think, I think you're hearing-
Okay.
Any other comments? We have motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Michael, you want to do your announcement now?
Yes.
We, I'm, I apologize. We had another announcement at the beginning of the meeting that I forgot about, that Michael's going to make.
That we're going to adjourn this meeting in memory of Officer Josh Murray, who was one of our public safety personnel. He was an officer in our police department. He had a rather swift and terrible medical situation, and he has passed. So this meeting is in memory of him.
He was, he worked here for five years.
Yes.
He was a wonderful officer. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that.
The next item is Item B, introduction of an amendment to the marijuana processing and cultivation ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. By way of background, you probably recall in 1996, Proposition 215, the Compassionate Use Act passed by California voters, which legalized the cultivation, processing, and use of marijuana for qualified medicinal purposes. In 2014, the city council adopted a medical marijuana ordinance that prohibited the commercial cultivation and processing, however, did retain allowances for qualified medical use and limited cultivation pursuant to the Compassionate Use Act. In two, in November 2016, the California voters approved the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, better known as Prop 64. This allows the recreational use, cultivation, and sales of marijuana. It also, however, permits local agencies to enact reasonable regulations to control, to sell, and process and cultivation of marijuana. Under the act, retail sales would require a license from the state of California, and as of right now, the state of California is not issuing those licenses, and they don't anticipate being prepared to do so until at least January 1st of 2018. So the reason we're before you tonight is to extend the existing medical marijuana restrictions to recreational marijuana. With the passage of Prop 64, in effect, although we have regulations on medical marijuana, currently we don't have any controls on recreational marijuana. So there would be nothing that would prevent a person from cultivating marijuana outdoors or exceeding the current limitations we have on medical marijuana. So the proposed ordinance would prohibit commercial cultivation, processing, packaging, and distribution of recreational and medical marijuana. Non-commercial indoor cultivation would be allowed. Under today's medical marijuana ordinance, we allow 50 square feet or less. Under the Prop 64 statute, you can have six plants maximum, so that would be a change. And the proposed ordinance would not affect personal use, whether it be medicinal or recreational allowances that are allowed by state law. Another thing that we did want to bring to the council's attention and seek your direction on is that we're, we're receiving relatively frequent inquiries from a variety of marijuana-related businesses about their ability to operate within the city. The proposed ordinance before you tonight would not regulate medical sales or dispensaries, any form of recreational sales, wholesale marijuana sales, including storage and delivery, medicinal deliveries which originate outside of the city Capitola, or marijuana testing laboratories, just to outline some of the more common uses that we've been, received inquiries for. The sale of medicinal or recreational marijuana is not listed as an allowed use under the zoning code, and pursuant to past council direction, we've interpreted that to mean that operating a dispensary or wholesale processing facility is therefore also not allowed. However, this would be a good opportunity, should the council want to outright place a prohibition- a good opportunity, should the council want to outright place a prohibition on those activities or to allow it, that we can work it into the ordinance. And so, before you tonight, we have two options. The first one would be to place a ban on retail sales. Under this option, we had asked that you direct staff to return with an ordinance which bans all or certain types of marijuana sales. And I think it would be important to keep in mind that the council at a future date could review the ban, ideally, once more cities have adopted their ordinances and have established best practices that we can learn from. The second option would be a retail sales ordinance where the council could direct staff to prepare an ordinance for adoption prior to January of 2018 that includes regulations and locations and proper controls for recreational marijuana sales. Staff's recommendation is that you introduce the ordinance tonight to amend Chapter 9.61 regarding cultivation and processing of any marijuana. And then, secondly, we would ask that you provide direction on regulations pertaining to commercial marijuana-related businesses and whether or not those should be banned, or if we should go to work and try to find a way to allow them in the future. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. Mike?
It is accurate to say that what we've done in this ordinance is only remove the words "medical" from our existing ordinance, basically. And, you know, in, to be consistent with the new state regulations, we have the same regulations that we had before. So, if this ordinance has nothing to do with retail or wholesale sales, delivery services, testing laboratories, that is not addressed in the ordinance.
That's largely correct. The most significant change was striking the word "principle." As you recall, when we did this in 2014, we also did it as an urgency ordinance. So, we took out many of the urgency findings per the city attorney's recommendation. One change that you mentioned that is in there is medical laboratory testing. That's a use that has been allowed-
Right.
-in Capitola. We wrote that in as an exception to the ordinance. So, that's, that's in the proposed amendment before you.
And we already have a business in town that, that is in the business of-
Delivery.
Delivery. And also, there's, there's a business in town that, it's hard to describe what Joey's business is, but it's, it's sort of the, the organization of the transport and delivery.
I am not aware of any permitted delivery services in the city today.
Not delivery per se. It's hard for me to typify it, but-
If we're talking about Mr. Sabini's operation, I believe that is a, it's kind of an office use where they do have temporary storage of a lockbox-
Right.
-which is, I believe, and he can answer this question more accurately, is allowed to stay on site for a short time, maybe 24 hours, and then somebody picks it up and brings it elsewhere out of town.
This ordinance would not affect that.
This ordinance is silent on that type of operation.
So, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Termoni, the other, the ordinance that we're talking about today, I think you correctly summarized, is really removing the word "medical," implying the same restrictions that we had on medical marijuana across the board to all marijuana. There is the minor change that we actually, we recognize that testing facilities are acceptable as we've previously made the determination that they were allowed, basically, within the zoning ordinance. The key question, though, I think, is, is how we want to treat sales on a go-forward basis. And as staff, we're really looking for direction on clarifying this, because there are a lot of requests that we're getting. And our recommendation at this stage is really to pursue option one. That is, give us direction tonight, and we can come back with some language for an ordinance that says, for the time being, no retail sales within the city.
Is there urgency to do that before 1-118?
There's no reason you need to do this tonight, but if you choose option two, we would need that direction very soon, because we would need to start work on crafting an ordinance about how to regulate the sale of marijuana within the city. For example, I know that the city of Santa Barbara has spent the last more than six months in a process developing an ordinance about how they would regulate the retail sale of marijuana. So, if we were to pursue option two, in that case, there is a time urgency, and we do need to start the process. If we're going with option one, we have plenty of time between now and January 1 of 2018, at which point we can come back. We could do it for a year and then come back and review it and see what maybe best practices look like.
Does it have to be a year?
No, no, not at all. There is no, I think, the goal, from staff's perspective, is that we're not on the leading edge of this. I think that there's going to be a lot of different ordinances that a lot of different jurisdictions adopt. And from our perspective, I think being able to see which ones are successful and which ones maybe are heavy on the regulatory, light on the regulatory, and then we could bring the council a range of options and maybe learn from some of those, and rather than being on the bleeding edge. So, that, you know, whether it's six months out, I think you would want to give enough time to really understand a little bit how it's starting to play out statewide.
What is the significance of January 1, 2018?
For the law takes effect.
So, state, once they passed Prop 64, they had not established policies, regulations for licensing retail sales. So, legislature's working on that now with the goal of completing it by January 1. What I've heard is that it's unlikely they're going to meet that goal, but that's their target date.
So, let's say we do nothing, and they come out with regulations on the 1st. That means because we've done nothing, we are subject to their regulations.
That's correct.
Whatever they may be.
Correct.
I just want to make sure I understood that.
Right, right. And so, for example, it's possible that the gas stations could start selling marijuana-related products, and we wouldn't have a regulatory structure around it. Most jurisdictions are either choosing option one or two. They're either developing their own regulatory structure, totally, you know, to say, okay, gas stations, you can do this. You need to have responsible server training, certain type of labeling, that kind of thing. Or, I know San Jose said, nope, we're going to sit out for the first 12 months, then we'll wait and see, and we'll develop our own ordinance. So, there are different kinds of approaches jurisdictions, but they're usually taking one of the two.
So, the option one wouldn't preempt state regulations? We have the, we have the legal authority to have our own. I see that attorney is grabbing the microphone.
Under Prop 64, any commercial retail establishment is still required to comply with any local regulations of recreational marijuana sales.
Regardless of any state regulations that come down?
Right. In effect, Capitola retains the ability to prohibit all recreational marijuana or commercial activities for recreational marijuana. If you allow it, you're still subject to the state law's restrictions on it. So, so any business that were to establish in Capitola would still be required to obtain a license pursuant to the state law as well.
Should I, can we hear from the police chief? Can I hear from the public first, or? Well, still, still staffy, kind of a thing. Definitely, I want to hear from the public, yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, council members. Terry McManus, Chief of Police.
Chief, what are your thoughts?
My initial thoughts of the conversation previous to my coming up here, the technical conversation is, I think it's appropriate. One of the things that I'd mention with regard to Prop 64 passage in November and the plan by the state to start issuing licenses by, as Rich and Tony mentioned, January of 2018. Worth mentioning is there's five different departments within the state that are all working on the same state-level scheme with regard to the issuance of licenses. And I think that's probably worth mentioning because it's, my suggestion is that some of those multiple five agencies are going to identify some valuable information for local municipalities that we would likely rely upon as part of our regulatory decisions at the, at the city level. For instance, the packaging or the, the packaging of product is very important. The, one of the great concerns from a pure law enforcement perspective is the edibles and the sales of edibles, recreational marijuana in edible form at the commercial level. There needs to be some regulatory effort with regard to controlling or identifying the amount of THC within edibles. And my own personal perspective and a little bit of expertise is that's the value of edibles from the commercial sales perspective, is the increase of the elevated level of THC, which I think everyone's concerned, runs the risk of it in the hands of adults and youth inappropriately. And so, understanding what the state, but not participating in what the state is working on, for me as a police chief, gives us, maybe related a little bit more to option number one, gives us the chance to consider and appreciate the direction from the council, what regulatory decisions might be made currently while allowing ourselves to take advantage of the state issuance of the licenses and some of the clarity that they'd likely provide, in addition to the ability to reassess at your level at some point during the year, should you direct us to choose option number two or go or maintain option number one.
Great.
Thank you very much. Tony, I have a question for you. Are we looking at, with, and Rich, with lots of different variations in these ordinances, do you think, a year from now, or they're all going to be, you know, like A, B, and C, or slight variation of them? I mean, I-
I think it's hard to say at this point, but I, my anticipation would be that there will be probably a handful of different models that will become used by different cities and will be adopted by different cities. Typical in this type of thing is, you know, of course, different cities will approach this in different ways, similar to the way some cities have approached the sanctuary cities. Question is, depending on the, on the perspective of the community, some want more regulation, some want less. But my guess is that within those different categories, there'll be some good templates that we would be able to look into.
And are we, are we expecting any litigation over this? Like, if a city doesn't, doesn't enact an ordinance, are they looking at litigation? Or if they choose ordinance A rather than B, or, you know, if they're, I mean, I don't know, we don't, we don't know what is going to happen, but just wondering if this looks like it's going to be a litigious situation or not. I mean, who knows?
I think there's the risk of that in how the ordinance is written and whether or not there are ambiguities. And, you know, that could become the source of a dispute that could result in litigation. But the California Supreme Court, and I think a Riverside County case fairly recently, has upheld the right of municipalities to totally prohibit medical marijuana sales. But the principle that was established by that case would apply as well to recreational marijuana sales. And that statute itself specifically requires any business that, that is going to be licensed by the state to be in compliance with all local regulations as well. So, I don't think it's going to be a big breeding ground for litigation, but there's always that possibility.
So, we open it to the public now, and then we can have lots of time afterwards for questions. So, this is the time for the public. Please come up and give us your thoughts about this. We'd like to know what you think about this emerging field. Good evening.
Good evening. Appreciate you guys taking time to review this. I'm Joey Sabini. I own and operate a local delivery service here in the county, and a good portion of my business is in the city of Capitola. So, we currently operate a dead-drop system, as Rich described, where we drop everything at our office every morning. My employees show up, kind of like a lunch lady. They take everything out and go about their day, and we do it all over the next day. So, it's a hub-and-spoke type model, similar to like a bakery dropping off bread at the local restaurant. So, pretty simple. Obviously, no packaging or storage or any of the other things you guys discussed. Anyway, we were going to ask for a continuation on this matter, just to further input from the community or ourselves, or help answer any questions you guys might have, or, you know, things you don't know, have questions about, or an open book. So, we would definitely like the time to discuss that with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of them right now? Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak on this?
I'd like to speak on this as a member of the public. I kind of like option two. And I think we found a plant to replace the Begonia for the next festival.
Well said.
I think, I think we should get ahead on this and get Rich working on a new project to get an ordinance that we, so that we, rather than waiting for someone else to tell us what we should do, we should get ahead of it. If it's banning edibles or monitoring, that's one thing. But I can see a little boutique in the village that would be very prosperous. I might even visit it myself. I don't know. We'll have to see if that's, if that's in the cards. But anyway, I don't, I don't think you should wait. I like option two.
Very much. Any other comments from anyone? Then, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the, or Rich, did you want to make some comments?
Rich, a question for you. Have we looked at all in that? Because for several years now, Colorado and Washington have been in the forefront of this. Have we, what are they doing and how are they dealing with it?
You know, I haven't researched it a lot. I think that the California legislatures have a lot. Police chief might have some info. I'm not really familiar with how their programs have worked and-
I mean, look into a state that's had it for two years.
The chief has some information on that, so we'll, we'll ask him to address that.
The other point, the other point that I think the police chief can also talk a little about is I know he's reached out to the city of Santa Barbara, which has been actively engaged in sort of option two. And he can talk a little about, I know he's talked to their chief about what they've been doing, about crafting their own ordinance to regulate it.
Thank you. And the city manager mentioned, they had been working on that for just about six months, maybe a little bit more, actually, since the passage of Prop 64 in Santa Barbara. Understanding that it's a lengthy process within their city to go forward with a retail commercialization of recreational marijuana. And so, I'll remain in contact with, with Santa Barbara. I work regularly with the chief of police there, and often I can bring updates as needed to the council here. With regard to the other states that had laws passed prior to California's law in November of 16, specifically Colorado and Oregon, I did participate in several meetings previous to coming to Capitola and learned quite a bit of information with the statistical data. And unless there are numbers, in my opinion, unless there are numbers to undo the numbers they provided, I treat those, that data as very credible to me. Colorado was very open and very honest in communicating to other law enforcement agencies throughout the nation, that they missed the opportunity as a state and as local municipalities in the state of Colorado to understand what local ordinance might have been considered, considered and/or regulatory efforts and/or enacted just after the passage of their laws there. And so, they, they made strong efforts throughout the nation to communicate to other states and other municipalities to kind of educate us to take, take care or take advantage of the ability to properly regulate the recreational sales of marijuana. Statistically speaking, two areas were of great concern for Colorado, and those numbers were echoed, different numbers, but echoed in both Oregon and Washington. Colorado had about 150% in a, in a, I believe, a five-year study, 150% increase in the number of traffic fatalities related to marijuana intoxication of the driver that was involved. That caused them, of course, great concern. The other data that they provided that caused even greater concern is a more than 300% increase in the number of juvenile or adolescents being admitted into emergency rooms because of over ingestion of marijuana. Those numbers repeated themselves in both Oregon and Washington. And they do believe in Colorado specifically, and most of the discussion and the learning that I was, took away from these meetings came from Colorado rather than Washington and Oregon. But they do believe that had they understood the ability at the municipal level to consider regulatory efforts, regulatory schemes, they might have been able to control those numbers a little bit better than, than they were able to. And so, as a law enforcement community, it was absolutely appropriate that we learned from some of the mistakes that other states had made. I hope that answers your question.
And am I making the correct assumption, saying that there, the concerns, from what you said, revolve around the edibles, like you mentioned previously, which are not well-understood by the average person and not, and underestimated or just not understood? It's a, it's a different animal.
That's correct.
Okay.
Twofold. Edibles and the application of THC via liquid form into edibles, number one. And number two, the process of extraction on the street, commonly referred to as honey-oil lab type of extraction, that process itself is very volatile. There's been deaths, there's been explosions throughout the states. Because it's volatile and it's absolutely not regulated. One of the arguments for proper labs, some of the current conversation throughout the state's proper labs, more on the medicinal side of the marijuana industry than the recreational side, but the need for proper labs, to remove the public from their occasional need to, to extract the THC content themselves and provide it to the sales.
Great.
Mr.?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other question while the chief is up here? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, who would like to begin discussing this complicated issue?
Oh, I'll jump right in.
All right.
I'd be disappointed.
Children of the 60s are ready to talk about this right away. And I never thought I'd hear the city treasurer come out in any way in favor, but that's okay, it's a different story. I, I too like option two because I think we need to get in front of it. I think we need to imagine what we would like in the way of regulation. And I envision something, not so much gas stations, but the same model we use for the ABC in alcohol, where there are licensed places, very specifically placed, and that, you know, a place where if a, if a 14-year-old is in a, a gas station, it doesn't raise an eyebrow. If a 14-year-old walks into a liquor store, people are noticing. So I think that kind of regulation, and I'm not trying to dictate the ordinance, but like I said, I think we need to get ahead of it and fashion it, fashion the distribution of recreational marijuana in a way that we believe is consistent with the, the tone, the mood, and the mores of, of our community. So I believe I'm in favor of option two.
Other comments?
I have been a proponent of any type of revenue for the past five years.
Where's your chance, Daddy?
I have always been in favor. But in this case, I am not in favor of this in this city at all, and I don't believe that is the feeling of the people that live in this city. I don't want to get in front of this. I am totally in favor of option one. I, I think that it's not a type of revenue or any kind of environment I would want to bring into this town. I think we made a strong stand on medicinal marijuana, and I have no problem continuing on to recreational. So I'm going to be in favor of, of option one.
Thank you. That's a good point, counterpoint. Who else would like to go next? Chuck? No, go ahead. I want to hear everyone. I want to take it all in first.
So I'm wondering if there's a middle ground between one and two, is that if we take the option two and put our foot in the sand on certain things that we feel are very important for this community and craft the ordinance in such a way that we wade into, see what we, see what we get from the state. Okay? So basically, we're not going to move ahead, but we're identifying clear things that we feel are important for this community, and we don't want to be in a situation where the state allows things that we don't want.
It's a, it's a little difficult for me to visualize exactly what, what you're proposing. I, I think, I think what everyone just needs to be prepared for is if we're going to get in the business of crafting a retail sales ordinance, that we should be prepared for multiple hearings over the next six months on this topic.
That's fine.
I mean, I mean, I understand that we also have the zoning code ordinance update, and so there's going to be a lot of questions that we're going to have to work through, you know, do we want to have, you know, as council member Fermin said, do we want to have a sort of a stagger process like ABC does? For example, ABC has on-sale, off-sale licenses. You can have a license for beer and wine only. You can have a license for hard alcohol. You have a license for late-night service licenses the gas stations get. So there's all kinds of different licenses and different requirements. So if we're going to go down this path, that we're going to have to understand that it's going to be a significant amount of time that we're going to be devoted to hearings over the next six months to figure out some of these nuances. So specifically to council member Tran's question, is there a way to cut the baby? I think my recommendation would be cut the baby by going with option one first and then agree to revisit it on, you know, give me a date, January 1st, 2018. At that point, when the states rolled out their ordinance, we can take a look at it. We can take a look at a couple other models out there and see where we want to proceed.
The thing that I'm a little worrisome about is when the state steps in, what control do we lose?
I don't believe that we lose any control. The state is really putting in place the overall sort of Uber regulations, if you will. So for example, I think, think about it a little bit like this. Alcohol right now is regulated by ABC, right? ABC is a state agency, and they have specific requirements for getting an alcohol license. On top of that, we have specific regulations in Capitola regarding alcohol. For example, there are certain places in town where you can open a bar, and there's certain places in town where you can't. There's certain places in town where you can have a supermarket, beer and wine sales, those sorts of things. So we have our own layer of regulation underneath it. So when the state comes out, they're going to have something like the ABC for marijuana, and then the question will be for us underneath it, do we want to just say we don't have any zones where any of this is allowed? Or yeah, those types of permits would be allowed in this type of zone. It'd be a lot, frankly, I think it'd be a lot easier to craft a local ordinance once we know what the structure is going to look like from the state.
Okay, another question. Generally, I think there's so many different vendors around here, and they will change to accommodate recreational, that it's not going to be a problem for people in Capitola if they want to get something. That's my general feeling. But with the testimony of one person that just came up, they deliver to Capitola. Are we getting revenue on that? That's a person who bought in Capitola. Are we getting revenue on that?
Tax of, or, tax of, tax of use? What is it called?
We, we would have to, we would have to...
Enact, enact an ordinance that we would be able to collect?
We can set a tax rate that we choose. And by the way, my, my opinion on option two had nothing to do with income. It, I'm not saying do that for more revenue for the city. I'm saying do that so that we craft it the way we want to now, and it can be very restrictive or medium restrictive, but it's in our control and it's in our control now.
And I thought there's this, you know, specter of things that we would be restrict, not able to do if California jumped in. What you're saying is we could still craft something that meets our needs in Capitola as we see fit, despite what California says. And is that my understanding?
Yeah, I think that's right. I think the reason for going with option one, even if you intend to permit recreational sales under some circumstances...
In the future.
Is to just preserve the status quo until you figure out how you want to regulate. Because it's much harder to prohibit something after it's already established in the community. So, so, you know, if you choose to go that route, that would be the rationale for doing so.
Well, I am listening to the testimony from our chief, and I also take note that California is going to be looking at a lot of the issues that current experience is directing we should take care of as regulatory issues. But as we just found out, someone is delivering into Capitola, that means someone bought something in Capitola. So are we getting revenue out of that? And I don't know what kind of issues come up because people are using it in Capitola already, so...
So a couple of things. I'll talk a little bit about the delivery issue. So, you know, internally, the last police chief and I and the planning director, we spent a fair amount of time talking about this, and we made the determination that trying to regulate the deliveries within the city of Capitola was functionally impossible, you know, that that was going to need to take place under state law. A delivery business located with a site that came for a use permit, you know, we had taken past council direction that said no to dispensaries. So an out-of-the-city delivery into the city, that's taking place, we know that, and I think we've issued business licenses for folks to do that with, from non-Capitola sources. Now, anytime anyone gets anything delivered into the city of Capitola, whether it's from Amazon, you know, some other order online, the way those types of, those types of taxes, they pay their taxes, but they go into the county pool, and then we get basically 15 cents on the dollar. So for things that are taxed at a sales tax rate that are delivered into the city, we get 15 cents on the dollar. The good news is we get 15 cents on the dollar for things delivered outside the city, too, but that's, that's a separate issue. So I think that answers your question.
Not much more we could do about it? Or can we actually put something on the record for this particular product?
So, you know, I think that, so Tony and I talked about that today. Let's say we went down the path that we were going to allow retail sales, for example. Could we have a local tax on retail sales? So Prop 64 put in place a 15% statewide tax on the retail sale of marijuana. Ostensibly, the city could put a ballot initiative out there and have voters vote on a 5% local add-on to that, or 6% local add-on. I think the county has a...
10%?
Seven or two? Seven.
Seven, up to 10. I think they said, you know, voters approved up to 10, they set it at 7 initially. We could do that. I mean, obviously, you do it in conjunction with option two, right? I mean, it doesn't make sense to pass a local tax if you have a ban on it. There are other approaches as well, potentially a development agreement. If there was going to be a limited number of retailers, if you're only going to have one or two retailers, you could enter into sort of one-off agreements. Those are more difficult to audit than taxes, but certainly if there was going to be a limited number of retailers, that is another path that could be pursued. But really, I think the question of whether or not there was going to be a tax flows out of your decision on this, is if we're going to go down the path of option two, then we have the conversation about the tax. If we're going to stick with option one, see what the state regulatory structure looks like, then we bring it back for a discussion in 2018 and see where we want to land.
If we go with one, two's still a death.
Oh, yeah, you're not closing with order two. I mean, I think that was one of the points we tried to emphasize in the staff report, is that under option one, our suggestion would be do it and sit, tell us how, you know, when to bring it back.
Kristin, you want to make some comments?
So on option one, where it says that the staff would return with an ordinance that bans all or certain types of sales, so if we went with the certain types of sales, would it then become option two?
So hypoth, yes, serious, two question. Hypothetically, there could be a blend. For example, you could say there's no direct retail sales. However, you could have a medical delivery business in the city of Capitola, and we would say no retail sales, but a medical delivery business could be based here in...
A retail or a recreational delivery service?
Or potentially a recreational delivery service. It sort of starts to bleed between the two.
I guess my, my question was more along the lines of, you know, if, if we go, can we go back to the, oh, to option one and option two? Then can we, yeah, there we go. Can we say, out of concern for, you know, edibles getting in the hands of youth, or the, the oils, or the, the gas products, that those dangerous cultivation practices, could we say that we are banning those for recreational sales, but not, for example, the plants, sales of the plant? Are we allowed to do that?
I think the answer to that is it really depends on what the licensing and regulatory scheme set up by the state of California is. If you want to compare that to the ABC licensing process, you can regulate the location of businesses that serve alcohol, for instance, but the types of alcohol that's sold and, you know, some of the characteristics of that is also regulated by the ABC. And to the extent that has established the regulations for, for California, the city would be preempted. So your question may be whether or not we could prohibit the sale of all edibles, for instance. We just don't know that yet because we don't know what the state regulations are going to say.
Which would be the argument for option one? Is just to wait to see what the state says.
And then, and then coming back potentially, once we know where the state's at and say, okay, the state has identified three different types of permits, you know, one is a class A permit, which allows the sale of everything. Class B is just, you know, certain types of edibles with THC content below X, Y, and then there's a, an over-the-counter permit, which is just natural product or something. You know, and, and then we could have the conversation about, okay, how many? Is it a conditional use permit? Are we going to put tax? What zones? That kind of thing.
Still for one, I talked to a few people that are talking about dispensaries growing. This is different cities, quite frankly, and it has an effect on the rental market for businesses.
Good or bad?
The way that I don't want to hear about, in terms of being able to pay a lot more and so pushes out other businesses. So I'm a little concerned there. I don't know too much about it, but talking to a few people that I know that have been trying to compete for places, and they are competing with the dispensary, dispensary could often pay a lot more, and so that's a good for option.
No. It's, I like to say I have a crystal ball at home, which I, I do, and I really try to look at it to see what, where, well, we have one upstairs. We have an eight ball, and it says yes, no, and maybe. And, but I really try to look out there to five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, because that's, that's what our horizon is. It's really the future. And I know we're all really nervous about this, but I agree with Mike. I think that it's, it's here, it's going to be here. It'd be good to plan for it, plan just carefully about what we want in our community, and there's a lot of things to consider. I think if we take it slowly and don't give Rich too much work while we're finishing the zoning, but just have a start, do a little bit, and a little bit, and a little bit, and see where we want to go, see where the state goes. But I don't think we should ban it right now. I mean, we're not, we don't have any, so there's nothing to ban.
The ordinance we're looking at tonight is, has, is a pretty good foundation for going off onto option two.
Yeah. So I, I just think we, we need to carefully plan this. As a nurse, of course, I'm, have mixed feelings about it. On the medical side, on one side, I feel very, very strongly that it has helped so many, so many, so many patients. On the other hand, I worry about the kids. So, but I think it's, it's going to be a business, they're going to have to work out a business model. We're going to look back on this and say, what did we worry about? They got it all taken care of, you know? But right now, it's, it's tricky and it's difficult, and we're uncomfortable, but I think we just should take one step ahead and, one step at a time, and, and begin planning for it, because I think it's going to be here. And so we should, I was a little worried when I asked you, Tony, about the legality. I was thinking, a new ordinance, this is going to be like the rent control ordinances that we had that were litigated all over, but I don't think so. This is, this is just something different, but...
I'll move option two.
Second. Any discussion?
I have another comment. Yeah, I, I'm surprised, Evan, because normally, you know, your, your history is you're the one that wants us to wait and think about it. And the reason I'm so adamant about option one is option one lays the groundwork for us to do option two. And this, you know, I don't see Capitola ever needing to be a trendsetter and have this policy ready to go in 18. There's, so many cities are going to go out there and try to get in front of this, and they're going to make mistakes. And I think with the smart person is going to be the city that says, wait, let and see what happens, let the dust settle, and then you can craft your ordinance based on the mistakes of others rather than trying to get out there and anticipate what's going to happen. This is Pandora's box. All those things you mentioned about this, this, you know, from, from the public safety position, from a nurse, this is tough because this is not like alcohol that you can measure. This isn't a stagnant eye where your eyeball bounces when you get to point eight. This is something that's hard to measure. And the more it's available in our town, I think the chief came up here and just made the positions about the availability. It's like, you know, when you're there, if, if it's not here, if you can't buy it here, chances are those incidents may not happen here. I'd be willing to bet they're going to be reduced. And as, as we see how it develops, I mean, I don't want to go by what Colorado did or what Oregon did. California's going to be its own anomaly. I have no idea or motive to rush and, and go for, to try to craft some option, especially to put on our staff to come up with this in the meantime. We can just sit here and take the safe route, option one, see what happens, and option one gives us the foundation for option two. We can see what happens, say, okay, this works, this doesn't work, let's go to this.
Chuck? Good comments, Evan. That's great.
Some of the products that are coming out right now are targeted on certain, with certain customers, and that really scares me. Kids vaping easily transferred to a lot of different people, and you'd figure it's a cool thing. I do agree with Mike that we need to be proactive, but I think it's a proactiveness that is based on good information. And quite frankly, I don't think we should. Now, some of the products that was just mentioned here, I have no clue about. I mean, when I first heard about it or got involved, or whatever way you want to put it, it was just benign almost, you know? And now we're in a totally different world. Like I said earlier, if anyone wants something in this city, I don't think it'd be really hard to get. You have to just walk up 41st Street, buy it in my cart, and the law's going to change, it's going to even be broader than that. So I don't see the big rush, quite frankly. I do look forward to state agencies that have put a lot of thought into this, and state agencies that are looking out at the, looking at the experiences of other states that have adopted this. So I would prefer one at this point because I think it's the wiser thing for us to do with Capitola.
Perhaps, and in answer to Ed, you know, maybe Kristin had the right focus here, which is directing staff to return with an ordinance which bans all or certain types of sales. If we take option one, what I'm trying to do is allow something as benign as... If we take option one, what I'm trying to do is allow something as benign as, that takes place now medically, but recreationally, not ban delivery, so there are no retail sales. Is that a problematic?
No, I mean, I think staff has taken the position that we simply cannot regulate the delivery within the city. I mean, there's just no logical way.
We're not addressing the delivery.
We're not addressing the delivery, I mean.
Well, I think it, I think it is, because I'm talking about option one that bans all or certain types of sales. So if we ban all retail sales outlets, but do not ban recreational delivery, then I think that.
That, that would be in fact the case. I don't think the city has the capabilities, frankly, to prohibit the delivery of, of products that are otherwise legal. We have land use authority to control the uses within the city, we don't have the authority to stop the delivery of, of products that are otherwise legal.
What we're doing now with the medical, is the status quo is what would be with the recreational. The business here would not be affected based on what, what you've said. Wouldn't be affected.
We would just be taking the, the word medical out of it.
We're just talking about other types of sales and, and retail outlets, it's not about a delivery service, that this was not intended to affect.
I was just focusing on the word certain types of sales. What did you mean by that?
So what I was intending there, we did get several inquiries about wholesale distribution, someplace that has a warehouse, they store lots of marijuana, and they do wholesale sales to dispensaries or retail outlets in the future. So that's a different type of sale model. You probably have more volume, but less traffic, you know, and maybe the council would view those somewhat differently.
I don't know, we have a big rush on this right now. Why don't you come back with a little bit more on what you would like to see, or what some of the options are for, you suggest, the option one?
I think that's option two, what you've just described.
Right, so to be clear, if, you know, if we're going to come.
We have to make a decision if we're going to go to option two, that's why it's on the agenda.
Okay.
If we go to option one, we can, we can end it tonight. If we go to, if we're going to go with option two, it needs to be done now.
Well, it needs to be done between now and nine months from now.
Well, they have to craft that ordinance, or whatever it would take to craft that ordinance. Option one just pretty much puts a lid on it, and everything remains status quo.
And we don't start it till 1/1.
We don't do anything.
The other one, we start now, and we have nine months to.
By way of reference, I just did a quick little look on the internet, San Jose, Palo Alto, Campbell, Foster City, Hayward, Davis, and Martinez, this was, as of several months ago, had all adopted temporary moratoriums on recreational marijuana sales, really out of the desire to get in front of, you know, to, to let the state put in place their program, and then they were going to be able to come back later with the regulatory scheme. So most cities are doing this sort of, let's put a motion, hit the pause button now.
Tough to you.
The only, the notable exception that I know is, is Santa Barbara, which is trying to get in front of it. But Santa Barbara has a different level of resources, obviously, than Capitola.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to adopt option one.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
For the, for the substitute motion has to be heard first, right?
Right. So.
We're going for the substitute motion?
Yes, for, for, in support of option one, Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Councilmember Termini.
Aye.
Councilmember Betrand.
Aye.
Councilmember Batorf.
Aye.
Mayor Harland.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, that was interesting.
So, we'll see you in nine months.
Okay, we.
Unanimous?
Yes.
If I remember.
Listen, we also need to pass the first reading.
This is the first reading.
That was good.
Listen, my name.
On your motion.
First reading passed unanimously.
On your motion?
Yes, first reading of the ordinance passed unanimously, second reading will be.
Yes.
Okay, thank you all very much for, for your patience during that, that discussion.
I like the sentiment, yeah, on this last one, I like the sentiment that we should be proactive towards.
Yeah.
I totally agree, totally agree. And, and how we do that, and when we do that, is really critical. And I would like to recognize that the city manager said, in terms of, you know, we do have the zoning ordinance coming up, and, and that is probably the most, utmost critical nature for Capitol at this time, I think.
Yeah. We have one more item that we're going to consider, I had an announcement, no, I just forgot it. Last item is, item C, considered a 2017 joint meeting strategy, oh, I know what it was. I'm sorry, it was on item A. We, I got a complaint from some, some residents, there, there are citizens out there chiseling out the fossils. So I did talk to the police chief about it today, and I know this sounds really bizarre, but if we could put two metal poles in the sand, and put a sign up there that would say something like, please do not disturb the fossils, or something, I don't know how else we could get word out there, but the citizens that talk to me are not comfortable approaching the person, the people that are doing that, and they saw somebody after the wheelbarrow and chiseling tools one day.
They, they should really call. I mean, they should call our police department non-emergency number, because that's, A, incredibly dangerous, and B, not allowed under ordinance, and, and we would respond.
Would it be worth it to put any kind of a, of a sign down there by the beach saying, remember, do not touch the fossils, or anything?
Wouldn't last long on the waves.
I know, that's what I mean, that's why, the only thing I can think of was.
What is that on the, on the edge, like where there's the sign that says, no dogs, no fires, no fossils?
So, Mayor and Council, this item actually came up with the Commission on the Environment
at the last meeting, and asked us to look at getting those signs back up. We used to have a sign that said, don't, don't take the fossils, I don't remember the exact words. So I've contacted our maintenance superintendent, asked him if we still had the sign, he said we didn't have it, so we're in the process of getting a new sign made, and I said, we got to find a place just to try and get it up. If we put it in the post in the sand, it's gone in two days because of the surf. So we're trying to find a place that we can put it that's not too high and visible, so we are working on it.
Maybe on the rubble pile.
Yeah. But I agree with the city manager.
There's a rubble pile down there right now, I mean, it's up about 20 feet, so it wouldn't get washed away.
If people see people out there, you know, with wheelbarrows, they need to contact the police department.
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate that point. I mean, I, people understand, sometimes feel like it's not a high priority, but understand that that's what 911's job is, is to identify what the different priorities are, and believe me, if you're calling about a fossil, and there's a more significant incident taking place, it will not be prioritized, but if there is somebody available to respond, they will respond immediately, so.
Yeah, well, the, the report I heard from the citizens, that when it was mentioned that this is illegal and not permitted, the person just got there right in her face, and this is extraordinary.
Right.
If you pull out your cell phone, you call 911.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there are challenges trying to enforce, enforce the municipal code as an individual.
Okay, our last item, 2017 joint meeting.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this item is on your agenda because during the evaluation process, from my position last year, there was a discussion by some of the council members of a desire to hold more joint meetings with other bodies outside of the city council. And really, I thought bringing it back to the full council for input was the best approach. So as background, the city council has held, since I've been here, I would want to say maybe five meetings, joint meetings with the planning commission, and they were usually sort of the initiation or key points of big, long-range planning processes, the general plan update, housing element, zoning code update, things like that. That's been the only joint meeting, as I've been manager, that I recall this council holding with another body. In the past, I understand, back in the day, that the so-called school district and the city council used to hold joint meetings. I don't know when that ended, my assumption is probably in the early 2000s, at some point around there. So there were two specific joint meetings with city advisory bodies that were suggested. One was more joint meeting with the planning commission, and secondarily, more joint, some joint meetings with the library advisory commission. There's sort of pros and cons to both approach. On the pro side, it allows the advisory body in the city council to maybe align interests and avoid going down cul-de-sacs. Alternatively, you could view the advisory commissions as bodies that are intended to do independent research and really spend time to delve into a topic, and sort of meeting with the council may predetermine the outcome of what their findings could be. So that's kind of the pros and cons of holding more joint meetings with the PC or the LAC. And in addition, then the school district, we certainly could invite them to hold a joint meeting, I don't know whether their level of interest is in doing that, the key would be to identify, I think, an agenda beforehand, and probably send the request to them with maybe some agenda ideas of what we would like to do. So with that, I'm available for questions.
I think it's extremely important that we do this. It's, in such a small town as this, there are people that have a lot of expertise, like the library folks, that I don't have, that I'd like to hear from, and I'd like to, to share that. And I think there's tremendous need to have meetings with the planning commission, we have one planning commissioner who didn't want to continue because she was so frustrated that their decisions were overturned by this body, and that's got to end. We need to be on the same page with these things, as much as possible. Not that we won't have our differences from time to time, but it's really confusing for applicants, and for staff, and for planning commissioners, and council members, when we go in all different directions, and that's what we've done the last couple of years, and I really want to try to bring us together to be, go in in the same direction. And I think it would be invaluable to meet with the planning commission. Mainly, we need to talk about the mall, but we need to also talk about things like non-conforming uses, and when we're going to allow variances, and things like that, that would be good to just have some discussions, I think. So I'm really interested in meeting with the library folks, and learning from them, meeting with the planning commission, and sharing information, and trying to get in the same direction, and meeting with the school district folks, and work, developing a close working relationship with them for the future. They're great ally, we can be great partners again, and we, we can, we can bring a lot to, for each other to the table. John?
So I, I support the sentiment of the mayor here, and, you know, there could be some opportunity here, and I think Jamie said something that's very important, developing a good agenda. So people who want to do the joint meetings, like with the school district, having an agenda that's agreed upon ahead of time with the two city manager and their.
Scott, yes.
Yeah, I'm working with Scott to hammer out a good agenda, so the meeting is worthwhile. I would like to add that as a past member of the financial advisory committee, I have been part of a joint meeting here with the city council. So that was when we were starting the budget process. So I'd like to throw in the fact, the financial advisory council also, committee. Before you hear, we did that.
Any other comments, questions, suggestions, ideas?
I'm not in favor of as many meetings as maybe you have in mind, but I'm willing to meet you halfway. I think that, I think that the, the comment that we, we overturned the planning commission, I'm going to say that that dog doesn't hunt anymore, because it's, I think the last one we had was 38th Avenue over that ordeal of the senior center, and I think since then, I think it's been a pretty good relationship with them. I do see a need to meet with the planning commission, as I think the city manager mentioned, on a specific item, and, and what I would like to do is, prior to us having any conversations about the mall, I think we should sit down and have, you know, that's when we should talk, because I think it's important that we don't run Malone-Geyer, the citizens, in circles, and that would be a great time for us to have a meeting and say, look at, let's try, I mean, I hate to use the term get on the same page, but let's just see if we're all thinking in the best interest for the city of Capitola. So I would support a meeting with the planning commission prior to the mall, and I would let the city manager determine at what time you think that would be appropriate for the planning commission. With regard to the school board, I don't really think they want to meet with us. I think right now, I'm happy with the fact that we have a breakfast club and a happy hour club, and between the two of those clubs, I'm thinking it's a great, I renamed your group, I, I think it's more appropriate, okay?
Thank you, I was waiting for our meetings to be called that.
And I think that that can be very prosperous. I, I think it's just a better way to, to set up with them, and I, and I think that we are moving forward with them, and I anticipate that we're going to continue to do that. As far as the library board, I'm open to a library meeting. If you want to have a meeting with the library board, I would say that it's a big deal, it's our biggest single project in generations, so to have a meeting with them would validate their role, our role, and make sure that we're on the same page. I don't have a desire to meet with the faculty, we already have two people on that committee, so I'm, I'm, I don't support that. I don't, nothing against the treasurer, who, who I love, okay, but, except when he wants to bring up option two, but I won't hold that against you, but, other than that, those are my comments, thank you.
Well, you know why I think it's important to meet with the school district? Because we are really partners in the community, they educate the kids, we have recreation programs with the kids, we have the library, we're going to have library programs with the kids, we have this old junior guard thing, and we have had a lousy working relationship with them for years. We used to have a great working relationship, when they needed something, we helped them with it, because we had more money than they did, and it was wonderful, it was absolutely wonderful. And it really, it really pains me that we don't have a good working relationship, their board and our board, and even if we only have two meetings a year, but at least those can be meetings where we can talk about something, have an agenda, have an item, you know, I'm really interested in doing some things together, like having an art show again for the kids at the museum like we had, or doing, doing something at, at the, at their auditorium, and we can help sponsor it, and just joint projects like that, that we can work on, that at some point, I think we need to meet together, even if it's just, you know, a couple of times a year, or once a year, to plan what we're going to work on together for that year, wouldn't that be a novel idea? But, you know, until we can, we get to know each other by having some meetings about something, it's not going to happen, because we don't know each other that well. So I think, you know, we could, we could make up an agenda of, you know, a couple items that, that we want to work on. I mean, that's why I wanted to have the reception for, for the kids in here, would bring their parents, get them in here, let's, some cross-pollination, let's work together, and do some fun things together, and, and sort of have a new relationship moving into the future, because it's just been, you know, very poor, you know, even though you've had the breakfast club and so forth, I don't really think it's really gotten us anywhere concretely. It's been wonderful, friendship-wise, but what have we done together, you know, really? Plan air show was wonderful.
The speed, the speed, the speed signs and the crosswalks at New Brighton.
I, I think you guys are overlooking the fact, I mean, we successfully made a deal with the gymnasium that I believe benefited everybody, and, and, you know, I, I don't want to minimize that, because I was on that group with, with, at that time, Mayor Sam Story, myself, myself and Jacques, that was like a two and a half year project to, to bring that together, and you know what, Stephanie, I, that was a lot of people opening up, getting along, you know, Jacques, you've been on, were on it for the past year with me, at least, or two years, and, and it was like, no, I think good things were coming out of that group, and I'm optimistic for, for, for Mike and Kristen to, with, with their two new members, okay, or one old, one new, to perpetuate that, so, so trying to force a meeting.
Not force, schedule a meeting.
Well, understand, Stephanie, that, remember, that, for two people to meet, both sides want to have to do it, and, and I think that's out of their comfort zone right now.
Not, not right now.
Yeah.
So I think, oh, sorry, Kristen.
It's in the, the, the staff report here, that if directed, staff will reach out to determine if there's a shared interest in holding joint meetings. So would that be a good place to start, to just direct staff to see if anyone's even interested in doing this, and then if we get a yes or no, come back, and then look at agenda schedules?
There's been some interesting people I've talked to, so I don't know whether they're all interested, or whether we're all.
I think we can direct staff to do that with any of these organizations, including the, the water district, and, and I think that we should start with the planning commission, and I think the mall is a perfect agenda item, but again, we need an item, we need an issue to get, to come together and discuss. So as those come up, I think the whole council is ready to meet with anybody, as issues come up, and as we develop an agenda, go forward.
Well, that's why I said, with an appropriate agenda.
Yeah.
You're saying not to force, definitely not force. We have these two committees, and as Ed points out, the committee with the school district has done things, and maybe it's a testament for how well it's been done, because there hasn't been a lot of controversy, you know? It just happened, there was a lot of work behind the scenes, and it's been good for the school district to get the gym, it's been good for safety that we have speed signs in front of New Brighton, and that we have a new crosswalk with the blinking lights, if that works. And these are good things, right? And it got accomplished behind the scenes in a way, but it accomplished a lot in terms of safety. And I know the school district is very happy to have control of gym, so they can schedule classes, and I think we gave them the parking lot, too, so they got the parking lot, which was paid, Steve got it paid, which was a good thing.
No, and, and, you know, and I don't like having extra, extra meetings, because we all go to too many of them, but I just think there's real value in one body sitting down with another body and trying to communicate.
I agree with you.
And trying to see what are their issues, what are issues that intersect, and, but obviously you have to have the topics in, you know, an agenda, and, you know, and so you have to have the topics in an, you know, an agenda and, you know, and so forth. But I think, I just think there's great potential for the city and the school district working together on some projects and some things that would benefit the kids of this community, so.
Okay. I think maybe, what was it, the breakfast club and the happy hours club, will come up with some ideas, and maybe that could be the formation of a...
We'll get past the most recent issue that we're working through and then carry on from there.
Are we going to direct the city manager to reach out to these other agencies and see what their interest level is? Is that, do we, was that your suggestion, Kristen?
Yeah.
Let me offer a suggestion because I think I'd like, I'd like some clarity on how best to proceed. At our next meeting, we have some, a big milestone coming up for our library. We're going to be bringing the schematic plans for the library to the city council for approval. Maybe that's an opportunity to hold a joint meeting with our library advisory committee. It's, okay, so there, that's one option. So that's something we can do.
For that meeting?
No, that meeting, so the 23rd.
At that meeting.
At that meeting, we would have a portion of the meeting as a joint meeting, and then we would get on, you know, we would adjourn, maybe we'd meet at 6 o'clock with the library advisory commission and then go into our regular agenda at 7:00.
That sounds perfect.
That's a sort of a major milestone in a library project, and as someone pointed out, it's the biggest project the city's done in a generation. The planning commission and the mall, I was hearing general consensus that at some point here, I think that the planning commission is going to be taking a look at some pretty significant changes around the mall. So maybe as we move through that process, we find a good time for the planning commission and council to come and put their collective heads together about the mall. That would be a really logical, a logical one for it. I'm hearing with the school district different opinions.
If there's an issue, if there's an issue that we, that would profit us by getting together, by all means.
Why not?
And let's do it, and if, Ed, you don't want to go, that's fine.
Stephanie, but I...
Oh, don't put it on Ed. I think I would like to allow the other two ad hocks to work for another few months and see if something comes out. And if that stalls, then I would be more amenable to having a joint meeting.
And so I still would like, I'd like to hear what Peter has to say about this too, in terms of the fact, but I believe when we had the joint meeting, it was when we were thinking about how to deal with the bond measure, not the bond, our liabilities with purse. So we were trying to figure out how we were going to fund that, and that was part of the discussion, I believe. I can't remember the exact issue, but there was a real reason to have the meeting with the fact and the council, and it helped a lot.
So if there is a topic like that that we want to have a joint meeting, we should do that.
Not just for the purpose of doing it, but when there's a real reason to do it so that you get aligned, I think there's purpose in that. And I don't know what you feel, Peter, but...
Well, I guess I agree with, I guess I agree with Ed in the sense that, you know, you and Mike are on the financial advisory committee, and I'm assuming that the information gets disseminated.
We never agree with each other, so the board never gets...
So again, and I'm not sure what the meeting would talk about.
Just when something comes up that's important, that's all. That's the only thing I would ever do it for, not for the purpose of doing it.
That's fine.
Any other comments on this item?
And so lastly, I do, you know, I know that the history with the school district has been challenging. I want to point out, from my perspective, I think we've had a really positive relationship with the school district over the last several years. We've completed a wonderful public art project there on right on the bottom of Bay. We've been working with Roy Segura on numerous projects with his kids' artwork here in City Hall. We've completed the gym project, which is a real win-win for both of us. We completed the, we put more money in the kitty and we were able to really expand the kind of idea around traffic calming and sidewalk and pedestrian saving around the school, both at Jade Street and at Monterey Park. So I think, you know, don't undersell it. You know, I think that there's been a lot of great work that's been done in the last couple of years.
Another thing I'd like to point, is, you know, I'd like to commend our police department.